Okay, was there any action to be taken at a closed session?
There is no action from closed session.
All right, thank you for that. We will move on to the next item. I think we're looking at the non-time and we'll move on to 7.6. Consideration of Cannabis Ordinance Task Force Appointments. And the staff did, did, uh... Oh, yeah, I didn't, yeah, I did. So I think, I was thinking that the board would like to...
I'd like to make a motion to pull that item right now.
To pull it for a later date.
Mm-hmm.
And so Lloyd, how does that work?
So with the proposal, there would need to be, essentially it's a withdrawal, proposal to withdraw, withdraw the item, and it would need to be public comment. And a motion would not be needed, although your board can certainly entertain the motion after public comment.
Okay, so there's been, the board's looking to withdraw this item. We still have to take the public comment on it, so we'll, if there's no comment from the board, comment from the board, I'll open it up for the public. Is there anyone that would like to comment on the pulling or withdrawal of 7.6? I read it, right? Consideration of Cannabis Ordinance Task Force Appointments. Sir, come on up.
Thank you, Chair Crandall, Supervisors. Andrew Dobbs Kramer, appreciate the opportunity to speak. Just a question on when this item might come back and also how this might impact the ability of the task force to finish their sort of charter by the end of the month, as has been. I understand the direction from the supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't necessarily have an answer for that. I'm not sure exactly what date we're looking at, so I didn't know if...
A date has yet to be determined.
Okay, yeah, so that's to be determined and not sure how that's going to affect, but at the same time, that's, that's where we're at, so. Any other comments from the, from anybody in the public? Anyone on Zoom? With that, we'll bring it back to the board. And action that we need to have for that, Lloyd?
No action necessary.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and close that item and bring that back at a future date to be determined. We'll go from there. Any recommendations, CAO, on what we should do next?
Since we have the sheriff present, why don't we start with 510, 511, and 512?
All right, so we'll go ahead and start with 5.10, Accept Donation From Linda K. Warren in the amount of $25,094.69. Go ahead, CAO.
We respectfully request that we bring this item back next week with a resolution.
All right. Any comments? Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public? I'll bring it back to the board and we'll, we'll just pull it and bring it back, right? Okay, next, we will do 5.11, Approve Update to the Bylaws of the East Region Town Hall Advisory Board. Earth. Lloyd, I think we needed to pull this for something you had noticed.
Yes, it's really just to make a minor correction to the bylaws of the Eastern Region of, Eastern Region Town Hall.
Town Hall, yeah.
And it is on Article 2, where it makes a citation to Government Code Sections 54960 et sec with two asterisks, requesting, staff is requesting to change that to Government Code Sections 54950 et sec, because that is actually the big initial statute of the Brown Act.
Okay. All right, Supervisors, Batier?
Yeah, I apologize, little pickiness on there. I saw the zip codes that you have in there and I'm just wondering, because like, I live in Clear Lake Park and Clear Lake Park goes all the way down to the end of Windflower Point. My mailing address, it's confusing. My mailing address, because I receive mail in my house, is 95422, but my house address is 95424. Wondering if you want to add 95424, because everything north of Clear Lake Park through Windflower Point is 95424, and that would be within your district. So just wondering if you wanted to add that zip code or at least think about it for maybe the next iteration? I just wanted to mention that I noticed that.
Yeah, you know, I think if we can, because I don't think there's another Earth meeting until the next month. If we pass these, they're, they're, they're good to go right after we pass them, Lloyd, correct?
Yes, so with the proposed amendments, it could, the bylaws, the update to the bylaws could be approved by your board as amended.
Okay, I just want to make sure to confer with the group about the 95424. I know it says here, the unincorporated areas of 95422. If we added 95424, it would include that and it wouldn't include the Clear Lake area.
Nope.
Or your jurisdiction.
At least my house.
Do you think that would be, be okay? It's up to me.
As an amendment, yes, of course. Your board has the discretion of that. The other option is if you, only because you mentioned, Mr. Chair, bringing it back to the Town Hall, that is also an option to just pull this item to, for further review, to bring this proposed updated bylaws back to the Town Hall.
And I wasn't seeking to pause your progress, I just wanted to at least let you know about the confusion of Clear Lake Park, that's all.
Well, it sounds like we can, we can approve everything and amend it today to include 24 and then it's done, if you wanted to do it.
Well, I do, they're, they're bylaws, they're not mine per se, so I'd rather like give them their say. I know that a lot of times, you know, I know that it might be okay, but then again, I'd rather give them the opportunity to, to determine that, if you will. So I think if we push it till, I mean, I don't know if it's, well, they voted on it this last meeting to bring it to us, so we might have to bring it back to them, unless they have a special meeting, you know, or something, yeah, but that's, that's their determination, so. So I'm, I'm good with holding it back until either next meeting or so, yeah. Well, their next meeting or whatever they determine, yeah. So, yeah, with that, I think, I mean, thank you for bringing that up, because then, but, so what we'll do is open it up for the public real quick, just, just in case there's anyone that wants to make a comment. Is there anyone on Zoom? We'll bring it back to the board and we'll look at bringing that back. Let's see if, in two weeks, let's just look at two weeks, just because, and then they may have something, some insight or something like that. I know that there has to be a meeting for them to determine that, so I'd rather, yeah. All right, so we'll close that item. And we'll look, what's the next one? 5.12, Approve and Accept Grant 2024-3105, County of Lake Sheriff's Office Search and Rescue from Direct Relief. It looks like we have Sheriff Bingham here.
Afternoon, Board. Apologize for this. I think, as some of you might know, this was kind of a last-minute grant that we were able to get into for some funding for our search and rescue team, and we may have gotten a little ahead of ourselves with the process by adding the resolution to the packet that came over to the board. What we're requesting is for you to accept the grant and give me the authority to sign the grant so that we can get that done, and then once we get that with grant or direct relief, then they notice, notify us that the funds are approved for us, then we'll come back to the board next week with the resolution to accept the funds as unanticipated revenue into our budget.
Go ahead, Vice Chair. Any other questions? Open it up to the public for any comment. None on Zoom? Bring it back to the board for action.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Supervisors approve and accept this $15,000 grant from Direct Relief, authorize the acceptance of funds via ACH, and authorize the sheriff or his designee to sign the grant documents.
And I'll second...
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. I will move, did you have a recommendation? Okay.
Mm-hmm, I do.
You do? Which one?
7.4, please.
That's what I was going to do. 7.4, Consideration of A, Presentation of Fiscal Data and Loan Repayment Status, and B, Resolution Authorizing Extension of Loan Term for Lake County Behavioral Health Services. And it looks like we have Director Jones. We're on the same page there.
Uh-huh. Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing us to present on a broad fiscal overview as regards our repayment status at a high level, and I'll pass it off to my colleague, Fiscal Manager Amber Luch. But we have paid off $2 million of the loan. We made good with social services ahead of the general fund due to consultation with admin. And as regards the overall county portrait, it doesn't have a significant impact to extend the terms of repayment on the fund that we borrowed it from, and we have been making a lot of progress. I want to highlight at a high level, a lot of the reason why things are so much money is because there's a lot more services, and so just for a timeline, when I started with the department in 2018 or 19, we were pushing probably a $5 to $7 million budget for the whole department. Now, fast forward to today, in 2025, I think we're pushing about $44 or $45 million in its entirety, and that's due to a number of things, Kelly and payment reform most notably, but also because we have dramatically expanded services. So that increased dollar amount really truly represents increased services, and we are very grateful for our ability to continue to sustain those services. And Amber, would you like to highlight any specifics?
Yes.
I believe your board got a copy of the notes presentation, did that go to them?
There were attachments with the item, yes.
Just a couple of things to highlight is the IGT, Intergovernmental Transfer Funding, started in July of 2023. Just in the last fiscal year, we've sent $5.8 million to that account to draw down federal funding for the services we're providing. That's caused a huge impact on cash flow. That's a new kind of safety net that we've had to have in place, so we've never had to operate in that manner before. Payments received for IGT back from the state from July to February, and this is tentative through February, we haven't closed out February yet, is $4.9 million. Medi-Cal funding that is receivable from our electronic health record totals around $15 million. Of that, we've received $14.5. So I know the last time we came to the board, there was a very large discrepancy between what has been billed to the state and what's been paid, so that has really started to close that gap. And just as a kind of overall, we operate on a close budget monthly. If you guys review the spreadsheet that I created, it's, it's a very tight budget. As of the end of February, we're in a negative deficit. Obviously, we're not closed out. We have revenue that comes in at the end of the month that's not accounted for, but there's not a lot of wiggle room. So I think the main reason for requesting that we repay back the loan by June is the, having to float all this money to draw down the federal funding and just the expansion of services. Like Elise said, our budget has grown, our services have grown, and just in the two years that I've been here, the budget's doubled along with services expanding exponentially.
Thank you.
All right, any questions from the Board? Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, thank you for, for this, and hoping that things get unclogged completely so that by June we can finish this. I appreciate you giving us this information. I know at one point you mentioned that the way that the payment reform has changed, and I don't mean to put it in the terms of you can now make money, but there was supposed to be money that can be reinvested into the department to, to... Are you seeing that, where you're putting out, maybe your cost of service is $800,000, but you're getting a million back in reimbursement? Are you seeing like that kind of payment, or has that not necessarily been realized?
Yes, we do see patient revenue, which is what that is called when the funding, the Medicaid funding returns back to you, and it's a, doesn't have any color. If you think about it, there's no federal color from that money, so it means it's very flexible in terms of what can be done with it. That said, the gap between what we've seen in reimbursement and where we'd like to be, we haven't yet been able to experience the benefits of that. We're still using it to get ourselves in a good place, which is totally fine for us to sustain and grow operations. You know, we just opened up a new Medicaid-assisted treatment program, which I guess I will take an opportunity to do a shameless plug for, even though it's birdwalking a bit, but that was in our North Shore Clinic, and that all costed money upfront to lift that up, and so some of it is investments that are good, but we are building out like program just as quickly as we can within our financial limits, and it's a delicate dance because you do have a lot of mandates from the state about what you must do, and yet counties are well aware that they have to manage their funding. So we do anticipate seeing more patient revenue cut down. Amber, did you have anything else to clarify?
No, I just would say that as we are seeing the revenue increase, we're also expanding services, so we're not really growing our savings, we're just using that money to provide more to our clients.
So it actually, in effect, has been immediately reinvested because we've used it to expand our workforce and services.
And, and my thought process was to help you with how tight that is to seeing those things being realized, but being reinvested is exactly what it should be done, so I appreciate that you're doing that. Just a quick question, this is specifically about the loan, but also being reminded of the fact that you borrowed from your own self from reserves. Is that planned as well to be reimbursed by June or shortly thereafter? What's, what's the plan for that?
No, I don't believe reserves are top priority. It's a balancing act again, of how much do you put away into each hole? Our biggest priority is to pay back debt to the County General Fund, of course, and at that point, yes, we have a plan for how much we need to have in reserves. Amber, did you have anything to clarify on that?
Just that we, I typically operate basing our cash flow on what we have as reserves and ignoring that amount from what we actually have in cash flow, so we don't overspend.
All right, any other questions? All right, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody from the public have a comment? All right, bring it back to the board for action. It's a resolution.
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Okay. Supervisor Owen?
Aye.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Rasmussen?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca? And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye. Resolution is passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, CAO, do you have another recommendation?
I don't know, I haven't done anything.
Director, your heart is here to do his presentation.
All right.
It's 7.2.
So we'll go on to 7.2, Sitting as the Lake County Air Quality Management District Board of Directors, Consideration of Presentation Regarding the Lake County Air Quality Management District Requirements and Current Operational Status. And we have District Manager or Director or Administrator.
Air pollution control officer.
Your heart. I said all three, just in case.
Slash, slash, slash.
No network.
All of the above.
While that's loading, I'll, I'll start by saying good afternoon. I was hoping it'd be good morning, but you know, that's the way the day went.
At least it's not good either.
Yes.
We're making that for last week.
Yet.
So I'm Doug Garrett, I'm the Air Pollution Control Officer with the Lake County Air Quality Management District, and quick synopsis of a few important things before the presentation is, we have one new employee started yesterday.
Yes!
So we've, we've hired one, and we have another one starting on Monday coming, so.
Perfect.
So we have him, you know, our first employee is at the computer doing all the training courses right now.
The fist pump moment.
Yeah, so, yeah, so he'll be doing training courses probably pretty much the whole week, because there's a lot of mandated training courses that, just get them out of the way and get them done. And so, so in the next month or so, we will introduce them to the board here, and so you can meet the new people, so.
Is yours going in circles too?
It's just you. I know it. See? It's been like that for a while.
It was also on a Mac.
Since we came back. It was like that all day.
You're the one that kept off for me and Jessica to...
That's probably true. I think Tom needs to come back to the speaker over here, reset all this. My computer's not working, I'm thinking...
There it goes. All right.
Perfect. Oh, okay. Okay, that's perfect, so, okay. So, you know, there's the presentation that kind of covers some of the mandates, the, the basic mandates and some of the current operational conditions or requirements or recommendations or status, you know, kind of all those things as, as one. So, you know, just to really start things off, it's what's the Air District, what's the Air Quality Management District do? You know, the mission and mandate of the district is to regulate sources of air pollution and protect public health. So that is our, our mandate, that is our mission. The district is a regulatory agency. We're created by state and federal mandates that regulate stationary sources of air pollution within the Lake County air basin. The main purpose of the district is to enforce local, state, and federal air quality laws, rules, regulations, to meet the ambient air quality standards and protect public health. So that's the, the very basic definition of what the district does. Okay. You're ahead of me. Perfect. So the current status of air quality in Lake County, our attainment status, 2024 was our 35th year of clean air attainment, so we've had 35 years of meeting all standards, and we're still the only air district and air basin in the state of California to do that. So we, we have been, let's see, sorry, yeah, so still a struggle. Many haven't met it and very few can meet it due to other issues that they have that we don't, so. But generally, we are running in the 60% to 90% range of air quality standards, so we're, we're bumping up to that border every year, and I mean, we have been for probably 10 years. So it's really about the status of those standards. So standards change will impact us more than anything, but that's one of those issues that kind of cover on the, on the next slide. What does non-attainment mean? So I, I put a lot of information in the slides so we can make this available, and it's a lot easier for people to, to read and understand than it is to listen to me, because if I say things confusing, putting it in writing is, we spent time to make sure that that's clear. So, so I apologize if I'm talking a little bit too much and a little too, you know, covering too many topics in one sentence. So, state, you know, what does attainment mean? State and federal law require that an attainment plan with area source mitigation and rule modifications be in place, new prohibitory rules, loss of ag operation exemptions, loss of burn program flexibility. There's a lot of things that come with non-attainment, and those are the things that we're trying to avoid. So what can lead to non-attainment is probably more important than what happens with non-attainment, and there are many factors, some of them we can control, some we don't. What we don't control is if EPA or the state change the, the standards. We don't control natural events, we don't control, you know, forest wildfires and things, so. But enforcing our rules, enforcing, you know, and dealing with the issues in the industries that we regulate, those are things that we can control to a, to a certain extent, of course. You know, there's, as you know, with every industry, there's always challenges sometimes, and, you know, compliance isn't always 100%, but, but for the most part, people do a good job when they know what they're supposed to be doing, so. But the whole goal of meeting standards is to maintain a public, you know, a level of public health that is acceptable. So the standards are based on public health studies, they're based on what is an acceptable risk. These are done by EPA and the state, and so that, that's really where it comes down to is what's an acceptable risk, and we don't set the standards, but that's how they develop them is based on public health and the health threats and risk, so. So in order to determine whether we meet standards, of course, we have air monitoring. So, you know, we have our main station in Lakeport. Oh, did I? Oh, there must be a... Okay. So we have our main station in Lakeport, which, that's the station we use to ensure or to monitor for meeting all standards. We also have the Geysers Air Monitoring Program stations, which primarily are hydrogen sulfide, meteorology, and we do some particulate monitoring. We did more, more detailed particulate monitoring for 25 years, and with near negligible results, we've gone to a lower-cost particulate monitoring, but we still do PM monitoring at all those sites. It's just a, a lower-cost process. And then just as an example of some of the other monitoring things that we do in the, in the last 10 years, we have monitors set up, or we've had monitoring set up at the Clear Lake Vent Site near, in Burns Valley Elementary School. We set up a monitor there for multiple years. We set up monitors around Bottle Rock Power due to community complaints when they were operating. We have the High Valley area, we did a lot of walk-around, drive-around surveys looking for hydrogen sulfide sources, because we weren't finding them at the, at the actual power plant, so we hike through the wilderness, drive through the wilderness, take trails of things and try and find where they're coming from, and we had identified a number of them, and, and they've been dealt with for the most part, but, you know, they still, things still happen. Cobb area, of course, we did a lot of monitoring after wildfires. We have portable particulate monitors that we can use in the field, we can deploy them, we can carry them with us, and we did a lot of that monitoring for months and months after each of the wildfires in, in more than just Cobb area, but that was, we'd spent a lot of time up there during the cleanup process especially. Now, the, the goal, of course, is to, you know, one of the main goals is protect school children, so we have set up low-cost sensors at every school campus throughout the county so that during wildfire events or other events, they have real-time data that they can use to make decisions on, for, you know, the children's safety. We're working on those, you know, they're, they are limited lifespan sensors, so we do have to go out and start swapping out a lot of those as they come up to their life. You know, they start failing and just dropping out, so we're at that point where we're seeing some of those dropping out, so we have to go, we're going to start working on replay, finding replacements for them, so.
Quick question on the Clear Lake Vent. Is it like a SCADA monitoring where you get the data automatically yourself, or do you have to go there and collect it? And just, I, I, very curious, because it smells a whole lot in that area. Even when it rains, you could see it bubbling through the puddles, it's very, the vent is very real over there.
Right. Yeah, we, we don't currently do the monitoring at the moment, because we, we had collected a lot of monitoring data, and that was used by the state and USGS and others to kind of figure out what the issue is, but no, it was a, we had to go on site because there wasn't, we didn't, we had the ability to hook into the Y... Because there wasn't, we didn't, we had the ability to hook into the wifi at the school. So we were able to get some limited data, but we did go out on a regular basis to. Basically capture the higher level data and to, we had to calibrate and check instruments regularly because they require weekly service. So, so we were out there on a weekly basis at least during the several years that that was in operation. The primary issues, of course, that's, it's a natural fault zone and there's methane and carbon dioxide, carbon, you know, so. Some things that are not healthy and. But it wasn't a industrial source or anything that we could deal with, do anything about, but we were involved in developing that filtration system that. Is still sitting there and that's helping. We haven't had any complaints in that neighborhood. So. Recently, I should say, you know, we haven't had complaints recently, but that, that's basically all that is doing right now is creating a shorter path for it and dispersing it at, you know. 20 feet in the air rather than on the ground level. So.
All right. Continue please.
Okay. What mandates affect the district? You know, I. For anyone that, you know, we have California Health and Safety Code, the real quick reference, but you know, I brought it just. Just to show, you know, all the flags are the things I deal with on a weekly basis. You know, I'm looking up stuff all the time. Because that's our, that's our book that we have to comply with. So, yeah, that's, that's the California version of the Clean Air Act. And there's a lot of things in there that affect us on a daily basis. So the district has a lot of mandates. I put a few references in here, section 4000, 40001. Rules and regulations will, requires us to adopt rules to enforce the federal and state Clean Air Act and all applicable requirements associated with it. Let's see, the district rules and regulations may and at the request of the state board shall provide for the prevention and abatement of air pollution episodes which add intervals cause discomfort. Health concerns to or damage to property or of, or a significant number of persons or class of persons. So. Definitions on what we're supposed to do are extremely broad and which makes things very complicated as well, as you know. So that's, that's just the quick, here's why it's complicated. We have rules, we have things we have to do. And the definitions are not definitive as to you regulate this, this, this. It's anything that can even cause discomfort. We have to at least evaluate and determine whether there's a risk associated with that. So, and then next one. With that, we're looking at what are air contaminants, air pollutants? You know, that's, this is where we get into what affects you. So. What is an air contaminant that we regulate? Definition, as you see, is very broad. Each of these parts. Of an air contaminant, air pollutant have a health risk associated with them. So everything on there has a health risk. And different levels cause different chronic and acute or, or acute health outcomes. So. So some things have a immediate health risk and some it's that long term exposure health risk. So. We've run into a lot of situations, especially recently with propane engines, the, the CO and NOx emissions from propane. For the commercial size engines are actually causing. High acute health risks to children. We had one, a facility that was putting one in next to a school and they thought it was next to a shed. It was next to a preschool. You know, daycare center at the school campus and it was the risk that was going to be over 100 in a million. Our permitting threshold is 10 in a million for high risk. So in 20 a million, it's cut off. No, no permit. That's the thresholds that are, that exist. So this was going to be well over 100 in a million risk just for that CO and NOx issue. So. So the things you don't expect propane is clean, but it's clean for particulate, but not necessarily for all other health risks. So, okay. So how do we deal with this? We have authority to construct permits and we go through the permitting process. We review everything. Before granting or denying an authority construct for a stationary source or modification of provision, you know, we shall, it. This lists out what we have to do. We have to require the applicant to submit information to sufficiently describe the nature and the amount of emissions, location, details, construction, everything of their equipment. And then we have to analyze the effects of that source or modification on air quality, on the community, on the health risks for the people around it. So that review is, is what takes us in, you know, significant amount of time because we have to figure out all the different things that come out of that source. We have to look at every emission source, every point in that process, look for fugitive, you know, where fugitive emissions, where are the main emissions? What chemicals do they use? And each one of those chemicals has a health risk associated with it. So we have to evaluate how much chemical where. And what's the risk and what's the downwind risk and how far away? It, it's a, it's just a very slow, but detailed process that we go through. So. Okay. Permit system. Yeah. So again, another health and safety code section, this. For all existing permits, we're limited to issuing a permit for 12 months. So we can only issue a permit that's valid for one year. And each one has to be evaluated for compliance each year when we do the renewal. So every year we got to, when they renew their permit. We have to look at each one of those permits and evaluate them to ensure that they are complying with the conditions of their permit. So that's currently, I think, 670 permits that get reviewed every year for compliance. While we're doing the renewals of each of those permits. So. So and again, you know, submittals have to be complete, you know, the throughput report, their annual reporting to us with those renewals. If it's not complete, then we have to follow up with letters and enforcement because they, they're not reporting what they're supposed to. So we can't do the, and we can't do that. Review for compliance if we don't have the details to know what, how they've operated throughout the year. So. Right now, currently our renewal period, we renew permits on November 1, but starting September 1st is when we ask for the data. So they, they have a two month window to get that data to us and we do the renewals through that two month period. But their permits, permits all expire November, October 31st and the new permits start November 1st. Okay. So getting away from the stationary sources now, you know, getting into burn permits. We have our online permitting system. There's a lot of information on this slide, but we have the online permitting system and what that does. You know, it was created in cooperation with CAL FIRE, South Lake County Fire. And we have taken that system over as they've no longer have staff or availability to run that program. Or they, you know, there's too many complexities and costs for them. So we're now running that and we're hoping that. We're finding a lot of quirks that, you know, because we're getting the phone calls now where they were getting them in the previous years. So there are a lot of things that we're going to be updating over the next year. To make that a much smoother process. Or we'll be doing our best to get that updated to eliminate some of those complexities that are causing problems. Permits can be obtained for burn piles. The online permits can be obtained for. Burn piles up to a 10 foot diameter. Anything over 10 foot, they need to get a smoke management plan because that typically can't burn out in the nine to three. Burn, you know, normal burn day status. So if they're going to burn longer hours, then it's generally a smoke plan. And the bigger piles, of course, have a lot more smoke. So we have to evaluate more of the impact issue. There are some cases that, you know, are different than that, but as a general rule, that's, that's the process there. Parcels have to be 1.0 acres or greater to obtain a burn permit. We do have some options for smaller parcels, but. As a general rule, again, 1.0 or greater, and that's the. Parcel of record as maintained by, at the assessor's office. So the assessor's records have to say it's 1.0 or greater. In order for a permit to be issued for that parcel. So. We've run into some issues and some, there were some quirks in the program which we've gotten all squared away this year. We think there were. A couple of places where that was a hiccup and it took a little bit of work, but that is now. The process is working again, is, is working. So. Currently, since the beginning of burn season, over 1,400 permits have been issued through the online system. So we have quite a few people are getting that and are using it and it's working well for them. Permits being issued online, permits can be issued online or they can come into the office. We have issued. I, I would, I, I don't have the exact number on me, but probably in the 100, 100 plus or minus range in person. Just regular burn permits. So that's in addition to smoke management plans, just for the people that don't have internet access or can't print it or. You know, there's different reasons that they, they're unable to do the online system or. Just don't want to do the online system. So they, they come into our office and we've issued those, helped them through the process and gotten the permits issued. So. So we're probably in that 100, 150 range for that. Smoke plans, of course, have to be done in the office. They're done by appointment. Smoke plans typically take, you know, half hour or longer. Sometimes we can get them done faster for the people who are, get the same permit every year, but. You know, we, we try and schedule at least a half hour because if something changes or they do new parcels or something. You know, when we're getting a smoke plan permit or a smoke plan. Appliance coming in for a smoke plan, sorry. Sometimes they are getting smoke plans for 10 different lots because they're managing all these different properties. So. We're writing up 10 different facilities and 10 different conditions and for 10 different locations because the weather and everything has to change. You know, the, the conditions that are perfect for this location don't match what's good for another location in the county. So all those things get looked at as, as the process goes. This is just a. Kind of just a reminder of all the different things that we do regulate. Mostly for the public to be aware of all the different things that we're involved in. You know, we have geothermal, we have concrete. Batch plants, gas stations, dry cleaners, landfills, composting facilities. You know, vehicle painting facilities, body shops. Plus we have the Federal Clean Air Act, California Clean Air Act, air toxin control measures. We have the state portable equipment registration program. New source performance standards, new source review requirements, national emission standard for hazardous air pollutants. All these things are conflicting programs that. You know, you probably have five different programs for the one pollutant that you're dealing with at a source and. Each one of them has different requirements, of course. So it makes it a little more complicated. So as we go through city and building. County building permit sign offs. This is something else that has become, actually. As we've cooperated more with the county, we're seeing a lot more of these. County community development and the cities are sending more people to us for sign offs because of the. All the traditional complexities that have been coming up in recent years with all new legislation for air quality. At the state level and there's just so much to do and no one is an expert, even we're not experts. We have to look it up a lot of times. But we do review every single one that comes in generally. You know, well, the. Let me go back to my notes for this one because I, I'm talking too much off the cuff and missing details. The need for district permit takes, you know, oh, wait, I'm, that skipped. Okay. So district view, we review each one of these for sign offs compliant with. We have to review them for compliance with all applicable regulations, rules, can air toxin control measures and other control measure requirements. To expedite sign offs, complete project descriptions are very helpful, complete equipment descriptions are very helpful. And in many cases, we're not getting those. So we're figuring out what the project is as we get just the building. You know, the demo permit sign off or the building, you know, just the, we're getting the single form without any project description. So we're having to go back and figure out what that project is before we can sign off because we don't sign off on what we don't know. And what we're trying to do is do that initial evaluation so that when we sign off, we can tell the public or the person that's applying, what do they need to do going forward? So if that project that they're going to put in needs a permit for a generator, we're telling them, okay, this is what you need. This is the process. Here are the forms that you need as we do that sign off so that going into it, they know where they're, where they're going, what it's going to cost and how they're going to get there. And if we find, you know, a few cases, we found generators that are not California compliant. And so we're telling, you know, we, we go through that and we explain to them, okay, these don't meet the requirements and here's why and here's, here's the issue. And so we help them figure out what they can do going forward because the equipment that they're trying to put in is not something that will get permitted. So. They can go through the whole process and then we can tell them at the end, or we can tell them at the beginning. So we're trying to catch them and do that early. So that they're not wasting time and money and ordering something that they then have to return. And we've run into this a few times even recently. We have a project that it, the EPA certification says not for sale in California. That's on the EPA engine certification for that engine for a generator that is currently installed. And they're trying to make that compliant and we're trying to help them figure out how can we make that compliant? Is it even possible? Which has become much more complicated with EPA's current status. So. Just as an example of some of the issues that we're dealing with going forward. So. So in this process, you know, we do have our, our office hours currently are nine to noon. People can come in, drop stuff off. We have a drop box at our door. We have an email that people can email their project information to us and we are responding to all of them and. For the most part, if it's a simple project, we're getting it to them the next day. You know, we're getting it, reviewing it and getting it back to them the next day. The more complex ones do take more time and there are some, there are a few that have taken a lot more time because. We're waiting on other agencies to respond to us, the state and feds especially. So, so there are some cases where it's significantly delayed. And we haven't kept them up to date, but you know, there's always issues with. So. Yeah. Did I cover it all that? Okay. And then, you know, why do we care about clean air? This is, this is, the studies are a little bit old, but this is the basis for the modern. Air Resources Board and requirements that we have. And that is that. Premature, premature deaths from particulate air pollution and other pollution are significant in California and they can be reduced dramatically. With small increments in cleaner air. So the cost of air pollution and asthma in California, I mean, just in 1998 was 1.3 billion dollars. So the cost now significantly higher. So the, the offset of what does it cost to maintain clean air versus what does the health costs of not having clean air? There, it's a, it's a significant number there. So. I don't, I didn't have time to go through and find you more recent studies, but these were ones that we had that were. As up to date, are still relatively up to date. So, okay. And then this last slide. So our current office hours are Monday through Thursday, 9am to noon. And then we have appointments basically from 8:30am to 4:30am, Monday through Friday. So. If people are coming up to the door, we are trying to help them if we are available. It's just between that eight to noon or nine to noon. We are making sure that we have several people available to help people, but you know, if we're doing monitoring or doing equipment and, or working in the lab and stuff, that's, we're doing those in the afternoons after the. Normal office hours. And so as we have more, as we get our staff up and trained, the new staff, so hopefully in two, three weeks. We'll be able to extend those open hours a little bit longer, but we want to give them a little time to. At least be able to answer basic questions and take, you know, take notes and. Be able to understand what they're being asked. So to kind of get them ahead of the curve before people start coming in and, and asking them complicated questions that. Cause problems. So. So that's where we are with our office hours, but we are reachable. We are generally responding to phone calls and messages within a half hour in all, you know, when at all possible. If anyone's. If, if we are in the office and available, we are responding quickly. We did have an issue last week where basically the whole staff was out sick. I was the only one. So I was kind of running around with, trying to. Keep everything afloat and dealing with burners and things. And so. But with three people, if two people are out sick, it's very difficult to maintain that. So. But generally as a rule, we are responding within a half hour and we are. Getting back to people Monday through Friday during normal business hours and even after business hours. So. And then smoke plan, burn request. We are requesting that people call in by three o'clock the day before they want to burn. And by three o'clock on Friday, if they want to burn on the weekends, just so we have time to check the forecast and get back to them before they want to burn. So if something comes up, we want to make sure we have enough time to actually respond to them and get them the approval that they need. So they're not waiting for us in the morning. That's, that's the main reason for that. We are still taking calls in the mornings for people. But we do request that they call early if they know they want to burn and that's so they're not waiting for us. We are still taking calls in the mornings for people, but we do request that they call early if they know they want to burn and that's so they're not waiting for us. And then, you can get ahold of the district at 263-7000, our same number, and we have a, a general email box at lcaqmd@lcaqmd.net where you can submit paperwork, ask questions, where that'll go to staff and we are responding to that as soon as possible. So, with that, I think I'm.
So, real quick, I'm going, yes, I'm going to open it to the public first and then we'll come back and our questions can go from there if there's anyone from the public.
Good afternoon, Tom Lasik. I just want to thank Lake County Air Quality Management District for helping us have some of the cleanest air in the state. Usually, we win awards just about every year because it's pretty awesome and my family marvels at how clean our air is. I, I do have a concern and that is going through major use permits, I noticed that part of the process is that it goes through an agency review and in many cases, Lake County Air Quality Management District is one of the agencies that reviews those permits and makes recommendations. And on a few that I've seen recently, and it's not just Lake County Air Quality Management District, some of the other interdepartmental agencies, we've noticed this as well, is they observe things that need to be changed and they make a recommendation and the recommendation isn't followed. And I'm just going to give an example for Lake County Air Quality Management District. In a recent permit, we noticed that Lake County Air Quality Management District, because of the amount of traffic on this unpaved road, recommended that it be paved and at a minimum be chip sealed. And the language would should be paved, should be chip sealed. And that was never put into the major use plan. I would recommend, not just for Lake County Air Quality Management District, but for the other agencies, if there's something that they feel needs to be done that they use the, you know, must include or shall include instead of, well, it ought to have this because that gets
right.
misused.
We're just trying to stick to air quality. I understand what you're saying about other agencies.
Right. So, but on the Lake County Air Quality Management District, as a suggestion, as they do the language to do it in such a way that it honors the requests and recommendations of your agency and it's harder for it to be ignored or disregarded. Thank you.
All right. Any other public comment?
Margot Cambara, I would like to thank Air Quality Control, I'm sorry, Air Quality Management for the fantastic job that you're doing to keep our air clean for 35 years plus. I, I'm going to ask dumb questions. You are the subject matter experts. You identify, you know, contaminants such as odor and what we're discovering now, especially with the county involved in commercial cannabis cultivation, that odor is a problem. Other municipalities have discovered that it is a problem that is going into courtrooms to be resolved, but you are the subject matter experts and I was wondering if you have recommendations. I know at one time, air quality was consulted and then it was determined that you would not be involved in the commercial cannabis permit application process. Okay. But that was years ago. It's a different time now and I think we really need expertise, especially since there is not a good way to control odor for outdoor grows and there's talk about cutting the setbacks to, oh, gosh, it's at 200 feet now, but you know, there's pressure to make it even smaller setback. We need science and we could use that expertise. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public input? All right. A close public input, bring it back to the board. Supervisor Owen, I seen that you had your pen up.
Actually, Margot, that's exactly where I was going. So, good minds. Was, I wanted to ask about the cannabis. I don't know, I know that it, the odor is real. And so, I don't know if you guys, I, I know this is kind of a new industry, so it probably has not been under your preview in the past, but I'm wondering if it's time to perhaps look at that to be able to control. And I also don't know if there's any any particulars or anything that is hazardous that comes with that odor. Because I know it's really unpleasant and I know I've said this up there before, but to not have to live with that, we bought property next door to stop a grow from going in and that was expensive, but we really didn't want to have to smell that.
Right. All right. I think that gets more into like discussions with ordinances and things like that. So, but thank you for those comments. Any others from the board? Well, not hearing any. Thank you, Doug, for giving that presentation so the public can know what's operating, how you're improving or how you're coming along because I know you were struggling at one time a couple of months back. You didn't have anybody and you had to close.
That's really awesome.
So, we're, so this is a good update. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. So, we'll go ahead and move on to our next item, which is, I'm going to go to 7.7. Consideration of Letter of Support, AB 418 Wilson. You have the treasure tax collector, Pat Sullivan, coming up, I think.
Or, right, Pat?
All right. Oh, fumble.